All right, it is seven o'clock, so I will get us started. Good evening, everyone. I will call our meeting to order, our regular city council meeting of July 27, 2021, being held in the Richfield Municipal Center in our council chambers. The first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. All of you that are able to stand up and join in the pledge, please do so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the open forum, and before we go to the open forum speakers, I will just ask our assistant, Executive Assistant Nguyen, to let people know how they can participate in the open forum.
Thank you, Mayor. We always encourage residents to come live to our in-person meetings and provide their comments to council. You can also participate via phone, and you can call during the meeting to 612-861-0651. You can also send your comments beforehand, before the meeting, to myself. My email is kwynn@richfieldmn.gov.
Thank you so much, Executive Assistant Nguyen. And I do have a card here for one person who is here in person, so I will ask Ruane Onseroson to please come up to the microphone and state your name and your address, and then you have up to three minutes for your public comment. Up to three. Yep?
Ruane Onseroson, 2421 West 65th Street. In 2018, 2019, my neighbors and I became victims of the comprehensive plan. Rezoning was carried out quickly and perfunctorily. Consequently, the elderly, the disabled, the schoolchildren of my neighborhood became victims of unremitting construction noises. Although we pleaded with council members, mayors, and commissioners prior to the rezoning, our pleas fell upon deaf ears. My questions regard rezoning and planning that hurts, not helps, the neighborhood. Is this move to commercialize private residences to commercial residences a practice that has been in effect generally in the past, or is it a new, exciting method by which private property will be forced over by the heartless planners on the hands of longs -- over the hands of longstanding tax-paying residents? By what authority does a non-elected body like the Met Council enforce zoning restrictions in Richfield? Why was my neighborhood not rezoned commercial? Landlords now will be taking in our tax dollars, something to do with lots and lots of tax incentives, something about TIP and all that thing, playing little games with our money. If you're going to hand the money, if you want to hand the town over to the commercial people, the landlords, and take it away from us, this is another sneaky way of doing it? That's my question. But you will never admit to it, would you? Oh, and by the way, how were your meeting, the open meeting laws enforced in the year 2020? I wasn't able to get near you, and that you didn't want me to, did you?
Thank you. I'll ask Executive Assistant Nguyen if there's anybody on the phone or any emails submitted for the open forum. Excuse me, anyone on the phone line? Okay, we'll wait a little bit longer, just to see if anyone decides to call in. Is there anyone else on the line, Executive Assistant Nguyen? Okay, thank you very much. Seeing as we have no other folks here for the open forum, I will close the open forum and move to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes of the Joint City Council HRA Planning Commission Meeting of June 21, 2021, the Special City Council Meeting of July 6, 2021, and the City Council Meeting of July 13, 2021.
Councilmember Supple, I'll move approval of the minutes.
Second?
The minutes have been moved by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Any comments or questions on the minutes? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, the minutes have been approved. The next item is the approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second?
The motion has been made by Councilmember Wayland to move the agenda and seconded by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Any comments or questions on the approval of the agenda? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the agenda has been approved. The next item is our consent calendar with City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, consider a resolution to withdraw from the city of Richfield, to withdraw the city of Richfield from the Regional All Hazards Incident Management Organization Joint Powers Agreement and approve the cooperative agreement for the Minnesota Statewide All Hazards Incident Management Organization. Item B, consider the approval of the continuation of an agreement with the city of Bloomington for the provision of food, pools, lodging, therapeutic massage, and body art establishment inspection services for the city of Richfield for 2022. Item C, consider the approval of engineering consultant pool agreements between the city of Richfield and the selected engineering firms for routine professional engineering services for calendar years 2021 through 2025. Item D, consider the appointment of youth members to city advisory boards and commissions. And that is all the items for the consent calendar tonight for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved?
Second.
The consent calendar has been moved by Councilmember Wayland and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Any comments or questions, Councilmember Supple, and then Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was very excited to see we had some youth commissioners, and I'm hoping now as we get back into more normal operations at schools that we'll have more youth that are able to join us for all the commission meetings. I know during the pandemic it was difficult, but I'm glad we have, are starting to get the youth back involved. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Yeah, I had a comment on the same item, just that I am excited to see a couple of those seats filled because I know we have unfortunately had a lot of vacancies with the youth seats that are available.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All approved. Thank you, the consent calendar has been passed. The next item goes to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
All right, this item is to consider a second reading of an ordinance rezoning nine properties throughout the city in order to comply with the comprehensive plan and a resolution authorizing summary publication of said ordinance. In 2018, the city adopted the 2040 comprehensive plan to guide future growth within the city. This plan is meant to inform decisions regarding land use, transportation, parks, and public facilities. Cities are required by state law to ensure that their zoning ordinances are in compliance with their plan. This includes changing the zoning designation, rezoning, of properties where necessary to align with the plan. The city has identified nine properties within the city where the current zoning designation does not align with the land use designations prescribed by the 2040 comprehensive plan. The proposed ordinance amendment would change the zoning for these nine properties to the corresponding zoning designation enacting the following changes. So 6936 and 6944 Penn and 69, 6745, 6737, 6729 Pleasant Avenue will be rezoned from R to MR2. 7104 and 7108 Chicago will go from MR3 to C1. 2010 West 66th Street, 6701 Lyndale Avenue South will be rezoned from R to C1. Do staff have any additional comments on this item?
Thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, members of the council. I'll just add that I'm sure you remember that the 2018 comprehensive plan update was more of an update as opposed to an overhaul, which is why you're seeing fewer of these rezonings come through this time. In general, the 2018 process reaffirmed what the community had said they wanted their direction to be moving forward, and so it's just a few properties here that already have the existing use, we're just rezoning them to be in keeping with that use and with the comprehensive plan now. So these are not controversial rezonings in this particular case.
Any other questions, or would someone like to make a motion?
Just want to make one clarification first. So again, to be clear, in this case, this is like the use of the property and the comp plan match, and the zoning does not match. That's like the middle piece that is inconsistent.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Are we anticipating other large rezonings of things where the land use and the zoning match and the comprehensive plan dictates something else?
We are not. This will conclude our consistency rezonings. As you know, we don't generally rezone single-family properties until a development proposal is coming through, so as to not make large swaths of the community non, or I'm sorry, non-conforming. So this will be it for this. We will be compliant.
Thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve, and sorry, should these items be separate? Okay, thank you. I make a motion to approve a second reading of an ordinance rezoning nine properties throughout the city in order to comply with the comprehensive plan and approve a resolution authorizing summary publication of said ordinance.
Second?
The motion has been made by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary and seconded by Councilmember Troutman. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motions have been passed. Thank you. The next item is to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to consider the approval of a second reading of an ordinance amending section 1105 of the Richfield City Code relating to the licensing of arcades. Staff recently received an inquiry from an individual wanting to open a billiards hall in the city, and since the section of the code has not been revised for many years, staff felt it was appropriate time to update the code. Staff feel that the proposed changes provide an acceptable level of flexibility while still addressing public safety concerns. The arcade ordinance sets requirements for application and licensure as well as certain conditions to be met, such as alcohol restrictions, hours of operation, age requirement for entry, and licensure of billiard tables. The first reading of the ordinance amendment was heard by the city council on July 13 to 2021. And so I wondered if staff had any, any comments or any comments before we move to vote on this?
Councilmember Troutman, this is just really an update to the ordinance. This is an ordinance that hasn't been touched in several years. After doing some research, pool halls, billiard halls are somewhat a thing of the past. In doing some research, there are several in the North Metro, very few in the South Metro. And so it was kind of interesting that we had this inquiry, talked with potential applicant about the current ordinance and how we could refresh it and update it, and we feel, staff feels comfortable with the proposed ordinance. And so that's what we're looking at.
That's great. I had one question about the bonding. It's the first I'd ever read anything about the regulation of arcades, but I was just, what was the, is there a reason why we require a bond for somebody to open an arcade?
Yeah, that's a very good question. The bond typically covers, you know, this is an establishment where there could be public safety issues. We looked at the bond amount and actually proposed to lower it. This is to ensure that this particular business obeys the laws of the city, follows city ordinances, makes sure that they're paying their taxes, license fees, and so forth, and so that bond gives, puts a little skin in the game for them and gives us somewhat of some enforcement action if necessary.
Excellent. Thank you. So with that, I would move, and I understand I just got a note to amend the motion slightly, so I would move that we approve the second reading of the ordinance amending section 1105 of the city of Richfield Code regulating arcades, and then would also ask that the motion include an authorization for staff to publish a summary of the ordinance as a part of the resolution.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions from councilmembers on this item?
I'll just add a comment. I'm really happy to see this item. I had talked a couple times to the applicant, and you know, the conversations were great, and I'm glad that this is something, you know, that we don't get across our table very often, but any opportunity we have to update our ordinances that we haven't touched for a while and bring it in line to where we are today is a great opportunity that supports the city, but also business owners and community members. And this is something, if they do decide to come to Richfield and move forward with that, this is something new that we don't have in our community, and I don't even know where the next closest one would be, but there's not a lot. So this would be a new option for our residents. So that's it. Councilmember Wayland?
I was just going to echo those comments that I think it is exciting because I would imagine because they are not quite as common anymore that it is kind of a draw for the region. But I was just curious, since it would be new, and some of this, just to ask, I'm assuming then if some of the regulations prove to be too strict or too loose, and there are either concerns from the owner's end if they do decide to open the billiard hall in town, or if there were concerns from the public safety side, I assume staff would bring this back to amend further as needed based on the actual experience?
Councilmember Wayland, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, but I'm excited. I think we're well set for something new, and I hope it works out for them to move into town.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question about restaurant, I'm thinking like the Frenchman like that has, that have, I think, quarter video games and billiard tables. Do those qualify as arcades, or do arcades have to be primarily for the purpose of?
They don't, they don't qualify as arcades, but the equipment within their facility, so whether it's a pool table, a ping pong, or a pinball machine, things like that, there's a small fee for that, and those are renewed annually, but not considered an arcade.
Great, thanks.
Other comments or questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, the motion has been approved. The next item is the city manager's report with City Manager Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I usually give a COVID update, and you know, I'm sure you've all been reading about the spike in cases and hospitalizations and deaths in other parts of the country, and you know, Minnesota has a fairly high vaccination rate, and in Richfield, we have a higher vaccination rate by over, it's over 10 points with the state is, and we're higher than Hennepin County, although slightly higher. So it was, you know, we were hoping that we wouldn't see it, the increases come here, but we're starting, we are starting to see increases locally. And so I invited Support Services Manager Jennifer Anderson here to give a more full update.
Thank you. So we have really two concerning trends within the city right now. One is the spread of the Delta variant, and then the other is the vaccine hesitancy and the misinformation that's fueling that. We're seeing increases in COVID-19 cases both across the US and here within Bloomington, Edina, and Richfield that are associated with that Delta variant. The variant spreads two to four times faster and is more infectious than previous strains, and it currently accounts for 75% of new cases within the state. COVID is spreading in unvaccinated populations and is not going away until either everyone's vaccinated or we reach immunity, and reaching immunity is difficult. Delta is the variant today. There will be another one coming behind it. So we're kind of in a very critical transition phase. Cases are relatively low, but we are headed towards a moderate increase and spread within the community. This means that cases are going to be widespread, and the CDC defines that as 10 to 50 cases per 100,000 people over the last seven days. Important to remember that. There was a lot of talk about booster shots early on when immunizations came onto the scene. The prevailing thought today is that the majority of us won't get a booster. Those needing boosters will be those who likely have compromised immune systems, those who are going through chemotherapy and stuff like that. There's also a lot of angst around when, when can our kiddos who are 12 and under be vaccinated? We're likely not looking at that. We're going to see that option until the end of this year, early 2022. One of the very sobering facts is that globally, one and a half million children across this globe have lost a parent to COVID from March of 2020 to April of 2021 this year. So it's important to get vaccinated. The best thing that we can do to minimize our risk with Delta and the other strains is to get vaccinated. All the vaccines are available, they're safe, they're effective, and they're free for everybody. If you can't get vaccinated, whether you have a medical condition or you're not old enough, the public health guidance continues to be to wear a mask in public places, even inside your home if you're living with someone who's sick. Outside your home, continue to social distance. Avoid closed spaces with poor ventilation, avoid crowds, and close contact with others. In terms of health misinformation, there's a lot of publicly shared misinformation about COVID and vaccines, and is one of the reasons that we're really struggling to vaccinate our population. People have been exposed to unbelievable amounts of information via the news outlets, public health guidance, fact sheets, infographics, just a constant barrage of data that the World Health Organization is now called an infodemic. There's just so much out there, and for the layperson, it's hard to dissect it all. And while information has helped us stay safe throughout the pandemic, it's led to confusion, causing people to refuse COVID-19 vaccines, reject public health measures such as masking and physical distancing, and to try unproven treatments that in some instances have caused death. Bloomington Public Health continues to monitor our local, regional, and global situation. Just in the past 24 hours, there's been a ton of information that's come out, everything from federal agencies to healthcare systems, large cities, local governments that are now mandating vaccines. If staff don't get vaccinated, then they're going to have to undergo weekly testing for COVID. All of this is coming on the scene very rapidly. MDH is looking at all of this guidance and will be providing guidance if they're going to act on it, I would guess by the end of the week. And so one of the things that we're doing here, we'll have a pop-up vaccine clinic at Unity in the Community at the end of the month. There will be a large PR push to make sure that people understand that they can come down. It's a barrier-free event, no questions. We'll have two vaccinators. We'll have public health staff on site to answer questions, and so we really want to drive people to that clinic. And so we work to, we continue to work with all of our community partners, city staff, to keep them informed. I don't think, I don't think we have to sound the alarm quite yet, but I think that within the next week, I think there's, there may be changes coming. With the CDC recommendations that came out just before we met earlier this evening, there are 14 counties in the state of Minnesota that fall under the federal mask recommendation. Within the metro, Scott County is the only county today. That could very well likely change by the end of the week. The other 13 counties involved are in northern and southern Minnesota, so we'll be watching that very carefully. I, we'll just have to see what comes. Unfortunately, this is, it's very difficult to just tell people, we just have to see what happens, but a lot of information is coming, a lot of data, a lot of that has to be sorted out and determined how we move forward from there, so there will be more.
Thank you. Comments or questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you for the update, and I completely appreciate and heartily endorse the strongest push being for folks to get vaccinated if they are able and not under 12. But I guess my question, and it sounds like you're starting to speak to that toward the end, is does, as conditions change, is there a scenario where it would make sense to reverse the kind of relaxing of masking guidelines even for people with vaccinations, or is, I guess I'm still wrapping my head around what the variant means, and that there's some people who are saying like, now that that's coming back, like I'm going to wear a mask even though I'm vaccinated, and I don't know if there's any science behind that. So I'm curious, as an individual, but also more so for the community, is there a point where it makes sense to go back to that as a large-scale effort?
Councilmember Wayland, that's a really good question. I think, I think what's, what will drive us there is the rate of increase that we see within our communities. I think it's, I think it's probably very realistic to expect that vaccinated and unvaccinated people may be wearing masks again. People who are vaccinated can get COVID, they can spread it, and so to ensure that we contain that as much as possible, I would not be surprised if, if federal guidance was that we all need to be masking up here in the next couple weeks. But I think that the numbers are going to determine that. It's, they're creeping up, but we're not sure how long they're going to creep up. They could downturn next week, and this could have just been a very kind of wild scare. It's, we just don't know yet.
Other comments or questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Troutman?
I just want to take a moment and thank Jennifer Anderson for your incredible work and leadership over the last 18 months. And people don't get to see it all the time, but we get to see it, and we're really grateful. And also, things that people don't really get to see are our work sessions, and I'm just particularly grateful that what you anticipated, information that we needed, but I know it was information that's not necessar, it was maybe difficult to share some of that from a policy perspective, and I just, what, I don't think we could ask anything more from staff. And so I'm just really grateful for that, that we're grateful for you and your team, and you know, sharing, not just sharing the information, putting it in context, doesn't mean we don't support your staff, and we want to make sure that we keep them. And so I just want you to know
And so I just want you to know that, but it just, just know, there's just, I was going to put this in the hats off for hometown hits, but your agenda item's up, so you might be, you might be gone. So since you're here, thank you so much.
Other comments or questions? All right. Thank you so much for the update. Thank you, City Manager. Any other items in the update, City Manager?
Just to echo Councilmember Troutman's comments, thank you very much. Manager Anderson has just, crucial during all of this and also a big thanks to Bloomington Public Health. Like I said, our vaccination rates are higher and we are also seeing progress in closing the disparities with people of color. And so that is also heartening and it's just discouraging news. So I really do hope.
Thank you, City Manager. Claims and Payroll. Councilmember Wayland, would you like to do Claims and Payroll?
Thank you, Mayor. I will. I will move Claims and Payroll. Second.
The motion has been made to pass Claims and Payroll by Councilmember Wayland and seconded by Councilmember Troutman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, Claims and Payroll has passed. Hats off to hometown hits. I'll start with Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. My item was just to say how excited I am for next Tuesday when we have Night to Unite. Being the first time in two years that we've done it now, I think it's such, it's been for my block such a great thing. I've participated with Edwina in the past and I'm just excited to see people out enjoying their community and meeting their neighbors. So that's all. And I will note, if anybody's tuning in, it is too late to officially register, but you, if your block doesn't have one, you can certainly do an informal party next Tuesday evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Councilmember Supple?
Thank you. And I also want to echo that and thank the block captains because I know they go to trainings and get it all organized. Today is an event that you may or may not have heard about, but Joe Carr, one of our residents, does a lemonade stand and raises thousands and thousands of dollars for the Gillette Children's Hospital. So that was happening today. And while the lemonade stand is officially closed at the moment, you still can go onto Facebook to join Bill's Lemonade Stand for Gillette Children's and make donations if you would like to do that. And he's going to be donating the money towards the Adaptive Bike Program. And so this has become a tradition and the community has been rallying around him. So thank you to everybody who's contributed. And then my other event that I would like to talk about is, I know we've mentioned in the past that the Richfield Historical Society is trying to raise money to fix the roof for the Bartholomew House. And one of the things they're doing is they're having back porch concerts. So on Saturday, August 7th, from 1:00 to 2:30, the I-94 Express is going to be playing and there will be a free wall offering. So if you want to hear their music, please come and support the Bartholomew House renovations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you. I was also going to mention Night to Unite. And then beyond that, just want to, I know we mentioned all three of these at the last meeting, but just wanted to say huge hats off to all of, all the people working behind the scenes for, in some cases decades, in other cases, years. For, the underpass is now under construction, which is great. We had that groundbreaking that there was the ribbon cutting for the Augsburg Adventure Park. And would highly recommend folks go and check that out if you haven't yet. And then also the, many thanks to the representatives and leaders from around the state who came to tour MICC with us and consider what the future looks like for them and how to continue supporting their important work.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. I think Councilmember Wayland touched on almost everything that I wanted to talk about. But as the father of two young children, the park is just phenomenal. It's so great and just now a regional attraction. I think there are folks from other cities that have an occasion to come to Richfield, which is great. And the park is full of kids and full of families and accessible for virtually every child, which is fantastic. And it's great to see not only kids that may have different levels of ability be able to participate, but also families and people noticing, oh, I noticed that it's, it's an inclusive place for people to play, which is fantastic. So hats off to our Parks and Rec program. And just as a, as a weekly, a regular reminder for parents that are wondering what to do with their children and how to engage their children over the summer, there's still free or nearly free classes for kids. My kids are doing frisbee golf this week. There are really low-cost tennis lessons and soccer. And there are just a whole bunch of programs that we invest in as a city. I'm really grateful for it as a, as a parent and as a leader. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. And then two additional things that I have are Crossroads Panorama, a local organization based here in Richfield, is going to have a fundraising event. And it's called their Annual Extravaganza Event on Saturday, August 28th, from 2:30 to 5:30 at the Richfield Community Band Show. There's going to be local artist performances, raffles, activities for children. So please come and it's co-sponsored by the Richfield Arts Commission and Crossroads Panorama. So please come and enjoy the event at the end of August. And then we also have PENFest this summer, September 19th, that will be happening in person. That's our Open Streets event here in Richfield, September 19th, from 1:00 to 5:00. You can Google search PEN or go to pencentralofrichfield.com to get more information on PENFest. You can have a booth. They have a lot of fun games. And it's really about promoting community, walkability, bikeability, healthy lifestyles, and just getting people out in the community together. We will see if by September 19th, we will still have large gatherings or not. But as of right now, PENFest is on for Saturday, September 19th, from 1:00 to 5:00. And then lastly, just want to make a shout out to our Richfield Foundation, who will also be having their annual fundraising event in October. So right now, what they're really in need of are sponsorships, so cash donations and sponsorships, as well as donations for gifts and raffle items. So Richfield Foundation is our city foundation, our neighborhood foundation here in Richfield. And all their proceeds go to a community-based organization serving Richfield residents. So they have a really worthy cause. They do great work. And they're having their annual fundraising event this fall and are looking for people to help with that. So please do consider donating, going to the event, buying tickets, bringing friends, and helping that event be successful. Yep, go ahead.
We almost forgot. This Friday and Saturday is the Urban Wildland Race.
Yes.
I forgot because I will be at a friend's wedding and I will not tell them this, but I'm sad that I will be missing the race. But yes, so I think there are still slots open, certainly even if, until tomorrow.
Yep.
Thank you, Neil, for the heads up. So you can still sign up. Even if you don't sign up, it's also great to just come and be a cheerleader. It is also, you get significantly less sweaty doing that. So anyway, would encourage folks to check that out. That raises money for the program between our schools and our nature center and is so important. So hope folks can be part of that this weekend.
Great. Thank you so much, Councilmember Wayland. All right, seeing as we have no other business, I will adjourn our council meeting. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.